Okay, we're good to go. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to start with a moment of reflection. Thank you. At this point, you can declare a disclosure of community interest or at any point in time through the meeting should one arise. And next, I will have a confirmation of the agenda. We have no additions or deletions. Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. But councillor Casenberg, councillor Willhouse, those in favor, it's carried. Moving on, then council has consent agenda items five point one to five point five, which includes the April seventh council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? Not seen any hands, not seen any here. I have a motion, council receives the consent agenda items five point one to five point five, and approves the April seventh two thousand and twenty-two council minutes moved by councillor Callum, seconded by councillor Willhouse. Those in favor. That's carried. Perfect. Okay, so we have a delegation request, and that is from Warren Howard. And before we could do that, in order to satisfy all the rules, to waive the rules, I need them two-thirds vote that we can be this allowed to happen. So I need, I have a motion here Perth County Council, waive the rules, permit the delegation to present. I see Todd Casenberg, councillor Casenberg is going to move that, councillor Callum is going to second that. Those in favor. And that's carried unanimously, so we don't have to worry about the two-thirds part. Okay, so next we have Warren Howard coming on then. And we'll just get him on the screen. Hopefully he hasn't got wireless internet, or he might not be this morning. Oh, there he is.
I had to set a few things to, to get on the screen, and apparently someone is going to promote my presentation.
Okay, so we've got you here, Warren. We're good to go. So there's a ten-minute time limit, just reminding you.
I'll do my best.
We've got your presentation on the screen now. And Sean's going to work through the slides for you, so you're good to go.
Okay, so just a few introductory comments. I think many of you know me. I'm a former councillor from North Perth. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Elma-Mornington Concerned Citizens, which was a group that was formed in twenty-eleven in response to the project that covered Elma and Mornington Townships, or the former Elma and Mornington Townships. It's sort of dormant, except for a Facebook group at this point. And I'm also involved in Wind Concerns Ontario, which is a province-wide organisation dealing with issues related to wind turbines. And I have my next slide. So just a brief overview, I think there has only been one full-fledged project active in Perth County. And it was because of all the actions locally, it was one of three across the province that did not actually proceed. It was a sixty-nine megahon project. But there has been other leasing activities. There's been some in Wallace Township, some along Line fifty-five, both in Perth West and in Perth East. And there's been some in Perth South, but it was more an extension across the border from work in Oxford, as I understand it. But those never got to the contract stage. But all of these projects activated community opposition. And essentially, a lot of them failed because the proponents couldn't find sufficient sites. And I just also want to note that Perth County declared itself as an unwilling host for wind turbines in twenty-fourteen, one of about a hundred and fifteen minutes across Ontario. But this was a political statement because under the Green Energy Act, council had no real authority over the projects. Next slide. That changed in twenty-eighteen when they repealed the Green Energy Act. And the clear statement was that they were restoring planning decisions to municipalities, ensuring that local voices have their final say on projects. So, next slide. That was followed up early twenty-nineteen with amendments to the Planning Act. And that municipalities now control wind turbines, and proponents need to consider what's in the zoning bylaws. And there were some restrictive zoning bylaws passed previously that were appealed to the courts. The, the Planning Act amendments is these are not subject to appeal. Key part of zoning bylaws are setbacks. I think it's pretty clear that the ones that in the province aren't adequate, but the province has not reviewed them. And, but municipality is free to set larger setbacks than those set out by the province. So my ask today is that council update the official plan and, and start the process of zoning bylaws. Next slide. The reason it's now urgent is that the, it's really been quiet since about twenty-sixteen when the demand for electricity plateaued, and there was no need for additional generating capacity. That's changing. They got two nuclear plants around Toronto, a Darlington's being refurbished, a Pickering's being shut down. And also, all of the plans to reduce carbon emissions generally involve replacing fuel emitting or carbon emitting sources with electricity. There is a provincial RFP out for additional capacity at the moment. And that's about three years out, this one they need it. And, but that, I think, is designed so that wind can't be parked. But we also have new markets for energy, and that is cities and industry are also trying to become green, and they are focusing on wind turbines. There's a certification program that's been announced by the province. I don't know if you know what's going on in the city of Ottawa, but there's quite an aggressive program to completely eliminate carbon in the city of Ottawa. And they're working through a group called the Ottawa Renewable Energy Cooperative, which is out looking for sites for renewable energy projects, and they have bought or in the process of buying two single wind turbine projects, one in Bruce County and one in Huron County. And they're also seeking members for their cooperatives in areas across southwestern Ontario, including Perth County, to, to fund these projects. We are getting reports of leasing activities down along Lake Erie, so people are looking for new turbine sites. So while we've had a lull in this issue, it's now very active. Next slide. So when you look at the Perth County official plan, it actually encourages development of wind turbines, providing the economic benefits from, to both the county and the province. I'll say questionable. And also it allows wind turbines on prime agricultural land based on an old PPS requirement, not in the current PPS. So this section needs to be completely rewritten because it doesn't reflect the views here. But as it's written, it says projects can proceed with no amiable input. Next slide. What I'm suggesting is deleting seven, section seventeen-nine, which is the section dealing with wind energy completely. It's not a requirement, and that would free up lower-tier municipalities' capability to pass zoning bylaws. And I think the official plan should focus on protecting prime farmland, and wind turbines are certainly not compatible with with agriculture, prime agricultural land. And you need to make some statements according to PPS on renewable energy. If there's methane digesters and geothermal, there's lots of things you can talk about in that section beyond wind turbines. And I think the plan's goal should be to meet local demands. I don't think Perth County wants to be the supplier of electricity to Kitchener or Ottawa. Next slide. In terms of the zoning bylaws, the proposing, the high-level ones for municipalities, it would prohibit wind turbines on prime agricultural land, which is what conflicts directly with the official plan. You'd establish a noise setback, and I'm, you know, based on what's going on in other jurisdictions and studies, I'm recommending that it increase to two thousand meters, and that's the current only deals with audible noise, this low-frequency noise, the infrasound, which travels much further distances. And we need to establish a setback from property lines, which is ridiculous at the moment. It was a blade length plus ten meters, increasing it twelve hundred meters. So that things like ice throw from blades, shadow flicker, and if the turbine falls over, it's all contained within the property. Next slide. So my final summary is that I am hoping, I don't think the Perth County plan is aligned with community views on, on wind turbines. And that's certainly the feedback I got from my presentations at North Perth and Perth East. But I think this, as I understand zoning, you can't enact zoning bylaws locally that conflict with an official plan. And the very permissive phrasing in the professional, the official plan for the county is a problem. And it needs to get addressed immediately because action is there, and they're focusing on where there were old projects. So, you know, Perth County is probably a hot prospect. I've put in a couple of appendices dealing with setbacks. The appendix one has the current plus a very interesting review from the Polish Institute of Public Health, which broke down setbacks based on the type of thing they were dealing with, which I thought was quite useful in terms of planning out setbacks. But it comes down to a number, and I've given you an appendix two, some examples of what other places are doing. The United States, Europe, and there's one there in Ontario. And the final appendices is if you wanted to get into a discussion of the value of wind turbines and, and stopping climate change, I, I will do that, but I'll just leave that aside. I think I know the time. I'll open up questions.
Okay, questions from council. Thanks, Warren. We don't have anybody from planning available just to answer questions that we might not be able to.
You can, you can reach out and see if I have sent a message to Sally.
Okay, okay. Okay, councillor Earl, I'll take your hand. Go up.
Yes, no, great. Again, thanks, Warren. No, it's very interesting. Warren was in Perth East just two evenings ago. We had some, I would say lengthy conversation afterwards, and ultimately, it sounds like each tier has decisions to make here as well. Now, we, we've made a motion, actually, and we got a report coming back, and planning, of course, recommends best practices. We have our thoughts at Perth East, how we want to handle it. Ultimately, you know, a united front would be interesting, I, I believe. We have to have community engagement, I would say, at this point. It's important. I personally have friends who have been really impacted by wind turbines, shadow flicker and noise in particular in Huron County, so I, I know how this can go and, and what it can do to families and retirement homes, and it, it can get awful. But yes, great report, but I would recommend it, we're going to have to have lengthy conversation at each lower level and then unite as one at, at the county. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Councillor McDermott.
If I understand right, we would have to change our official plan, and then that would allow the lower tiers to be able to bring out bylaws. Am I correct on that?
Well, I have Sally on the screen. Good morning, Sally. I'm going to let Sally answer that question.
Good morning. I, I just wanted to thank Warren for the presentation. It's certainly, I appreciate you bringing this subject area up because, like you say, there has been a lull, and it certainly hasn't been on our radar as an area of policy for us to be investigating in, in great detail. And so it is important for us to consider the amendments, certainly, for the official plan to set the stage for municipalities to have the ability to put the zoning provisions that they may want into, into place or to improve them in those bylaws. So, yeah, I do think some update is required to the OP on this area, and I think that it's just a really good opportunity today to sort of to talk about it more, to hear council's views on, on the, the subject area, and to get some more direction on timelines and priorities that you want the department to set for these updates. We are working on the OP, the new OP. And this, this policy is part of that project, certainly, but I guess I'm curious if councils want to see us working more specifically on that, on a different timeline.
Deputy Warden Eggers.
I would like that we amend the official plan that does not, so it does not allow wind turbines and do it right now. I don't think we want to wait until the new official plan comes out. I think something could happen between now and then. So I, personally, I'd like to see staff start working on that, and if we need to have, I know it's, they've got an awful lot on their plate now, and I get that. And, but if there's something that we can, simple and easy that we can get in the official plan to, to stop them, I think, I think that's the route we should go. And then if each of the municipalities need to put something in zoning in place as well, I'm hoping that we can do the same across the board, that all the municipalities. And maybe you're not all on that page, but I know Perth East is. Perth East does not want wind turbines. We said it a few years ago, we were unwilling hosts. We got that census the other night around the table again. We, we really don't want them in Perth East.
Other comments? Questions? Not seeing a whole lot of hands go up. Councillor Casenberg.
While I appreciate that the planning team is extremely busy with creating a draft of the new official plan and preparing it, starting this for us, I do think that there is a sense of urgency. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. And, and so I, I actually concur with Deputy Warden Eggers's comments at this point in time that it would be appropriate, in my opinion, to invite staff to bring forward a, an approach to this or directly bringing forward language that would amend the current official plan for this purpose.
Other comments or questions?
If I could jump in. It is, you know, I'm very sensitive to the conflicting requirements. And when I stepped back from the process, I was wondering if just amending the official plan to remove section seven, seventeen-nine, and there's a couple of other references, move, remove that from the plan, and therefore the plan is silent on wind turbines, that would free up the space for municipalities to enact bylaws or, or zoning bylaws. And I was thinking of that as a simple solution. The operative issue in terms of moving forward on projects is what's in the lower-tier zoning bylaws, not the official plan, but it's a bear, I, I see it as a barrier to, to putting in proper bylaws.
Okay, I can ask Sally just a comment on what he just stated there. Does that make sense to you?
It's fair, certainly. And I think my response is that because this hasn't been front and centre for us, we do need some time to investigate whether that is the right, the right course of action. I would hate to, to rush into thinking that something is low-hanging fruit and then find that we didn't set ourselves up adequately.
Okay, other comments or questions? I'm not seeing any hands. So I guess, first and foremost, we need a motion to receive the presentation from Warren Howard regarding the official plan wind turbines, moved by councillor Duncan, second by councillor Willhouse. Those in favor? It's carried. So the next part of that, I'm gonna, I haven't got a motion, but I'm gonna make a motion, is that we forward this to staff to bring back a report with recommendations on how to deal with this. And that's going to be moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor McDermott. And I know that the planning department is extremely busy. Before we just go any further, should we put a timeline on this? And I see Sally's hand up.
I just wanted to pose a question to council before the, a vote is made, and that is that we do have an consultant right now helping us work on the OP. And I'd like to reach out to them and see if they have some expertise already sort of on board that I could access. And if there was some cost associated that with that, in addition to what we have currently from them on our OP, is that something council is willing to move forward with? For us to get some additional resources that are already sort of in our, in our environment and working on our OP.
Okay, I see some heads nodding up and down of that comment.
I mean, I don't know what they may have to offer, but if they do, is that something you want me to come back to seek funds for, or do you want me to move ahead? Within a certain frame, maybe, within a certain amount.
We're just going to move ahead, I believe. I, I see a few nods on that one. So, okay, the motion was to refer this to staff and have them bring back a report. We're not going to put a timeline on it right now, but as soon as possible would be preferred, but she's, Sally's going to reach out to lower tiers and if we're going to make a decision, we want to make the right decision. We don't want to be, as Sally said, we don't want to do something that's going to come back and bite us. Okay, got a motion on the floor. It's moved to second. Any further discussion? Those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you for your time.
Will we get the report back? I'm sure somebody will be, will forward it on. Or it'll be on the website or whatever.
And if, if West Perth and Perth South are interested in council presentation by Zoom, I suppose I could try and work it into my schedule.
Just a quick question for you. So you're, you're strictly concentrating on wind turbines?
Correct.
Have you done anything with solar panels at all?
No, I, there are a separate set of issues, but a lot of reports, I say that the C say that wind turbines are bad and solar panels are worse, worse, or worse in terms of, I mean, land occupied, I mean, you know, in prime agricultural land, their intermittent nature, the cost, all of those things.
That's kind of the reason why I asked you the question.
But I, so I, I'm not an expert in that.
We down to forty highway, just off the Lantho line, and there's a whole farm park here in solar panels.
And, well, it's my understanding of Perth County wants to protect its farmland, which I certainly support.
Okay, very good. Well, we're going to move on. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda, we're going to move on here, and we have economic development tourism. Now, there was a slight potential for Meredith to be a bit late, but we're not, we're good.
Good morning, County Council.
We're good to go.
Excellent. I'm here today to provide a brief update on our economic development and tourism activities for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two. Like supply chain issues and our current paper shortage, Ashley's been very proactive, and I'm happy to report that our tourism brochure and our Farmgate map are refreshed, updated, and are ready to go to print, and will be out the door on time and on budget. We've been working with Tourism Stratford on a storytelling campaign focusing on celebrating, celebrating local food in our region. From Perth County Farms to Stratford Tables will launch later in the fall. We continue to offer our snapshot program to local businesses. This project not only gives our business community professional polished photography, it also helps us build our photo library. We continue to grow and develop our Discover More Adventure Signature Experience program. Sorry, we, sorry. We continue to grow and develop our Discover More Signature Experience program, and we'll be staring launches throughout twenty-twenty-two. We have ten planned for this year. The Snapshot Program, Perth County Farms to Stratford Tables, and our Discover More Signature Adventure Experience campaigns have been generously funded through RTO four. They also funded our Maple Syrup Festival campaign in March. Justin has been busy following up with our business community that participated in our business retention and expansion project from last year. Pending retirements continue to be a common concern, so we'll be hosting a webinar in mid to late June on succession planning. Justin is also working out the details, and we'll have more to share in our next news letter on May thirteenth, so watch your inboxes. We continue to promote the extensive variety of opportunities for skilled and unskilled labor around the county. We're working with our school boards, service providers on a series of engagement videos promoting the many different opportunities that we have here. I'd like to give a big shout out to councillor Casenberg and his team in North Perth. Their perseverance and dedication to improving access to training and skilled trades has definitely paid off. Announced late Wednesday afternoon, North Perth received one point eight million dollars from the Ontario Ministry of Labor Skills Development Fund that approved a project that will create a regional technology and skills learning hub in that wood. So, thank you. And congrats. Economic Development staff have been managing the lead nurturing program for the Southern Ontario Marketing Alliance. This will continue and help us better understand and track our current lead considerations within our CRM software and improve our response time and tracking, sorry, improve our response time and tracking when leads come in and follow-up is required. I'm happy to report our Digital Main Street three point O successfully serviced sixty-six businesses in digital, in a variety of digital services. I'd like to also make note, not part of our work plan, but we submitted a funding application through the Ontario Ministry of Agricultural Food and Rural Affairs workforce attraction and retention stream in early March. And the proposed project is to develop an employer toolkit of best practices with implementation and instructions on attraction, retention, and employee housing programs and initiatives. We know of many businesses across the province that are using unique techniques to attract, retain, and house employees. We'd like to compile a, a list of these successful programs and include detailed instructions on how those companies implemented their programs in their organization. So we'd like to develop a catalog style for employer, our Perth County employers to pick and choose of what program, what successful programs potentially could work for them. Should we be successful at this project, we would not start this until late fall. So that's it for my, my presentation for our economic development quarterly report. I'm happy to take any questions, should you have any.
Thanks, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith on her report? Good report. When's the potential announcement on that red funding application?
We won't hear anything until the late summer, so.
After the election, then?
Yes.
So no questions for Meredith on this report? Not seen any hands. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the economic development tourism, tourism quarterly update. Deputy Warden Eggers, second by councillor McDermott. Those in favor? That is carried. Perfect. Now, we have a report for Maggie, but this one is going to be handled by Meredith this morning. So take it away, Meredith.
So I will be presenting Maggie Martin's monthly transportation report. I'd just like to highlight a couple of things. We've serviced five thousand four hundred and thirty-five rides to date, so that's, we're seeing a great growth, which is excellent. And on March eighteenth, we celebrated Transit Appreciation Day, and we offered free rides, and we had sixty-one riders took advantage of this, of our celebration day, so that was excellent. Maggie's also been busy reaching out to employers along the PC Connect route, encouraging them to promote our service to their staff and potential employees. And she's also taking that opportunity to find out ways that we can improve service so it better suits our industry needs. Our public survey is now closed. We had over three hundred participants, so Maggie is busy organizing the data and doing the analysis to find out how and where we can improve and make service enhancements. So more details to come on the survey results later in the spring. And our MTO reporting is due next week, so updated financials will be shared with you at her next update at, next month. So I'm happy to take any questions, should there be any.
Thanks, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith on Maggie's report? Not seen any hands. Quick question. So we did have a little blip there yesterday. Not seen any hands. Uh, quick question. So we did have a little blip there yesterday. We had a one driver not available. But that seems to be improving to what it was two or three months ago, so we're in the right direction?
Yes, we are. Uh, Voilago has been very active in recruiting and training um drivers, so obviously like we're we're still. Um, having some little bumps along the way when uh because of COVID and isolation periods. So we have had a couple of stop routes, but it's it is improving, so hopefully that is gonna be a nail and not a non-issue soon.
Yeah, let's hope. Not sure how long that's gonna be, but let's hope though. Yeah, because you're seeing it all over, like. Emergency departments, everything you're shutting down because of COVID-related people missing, so. It's not that we're gonna be oblivious to it. Okay, I have a motion Perth County Council receives the PC Connect March Update Report. Move by Councillor Casenberg. Seconded by. Councillor Duncan. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much, Meredith.
Take care.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Annette. Director of Corporate Services, I believe, is our next report.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um, just a brief overview of the activities for the month of March in corporate services. A few highlights. Legislative Services hosted two accessibility terminology information sessions. They were facilitated by Sean McCoy. And I have to say they were excellent. We had forty-three people attend and. Sean did a phenomenal job. There are some shared tools as well related to those seminars that are available. Uh, speaking of accessibility, Legislative Services presented the Accessibility Annual Status Update two thousand twenty-one to all of the lower tiers in March. Um, a few other highlights. Finance has been working collaboratively with Communications. To promote video resources and educational materials that were created by MPAC. To provide information to the public on various tax-related issues. So those resources will be shared on Perth County's social media channels. Finance is also working on Perth County's Asset Management Plan. Um, and they're working together with Perth County Asset with Perth County Asset Management Group. Working together to prepare for the upcoming deadline of July first. Uh, updated with respect to court services. The courts have not returned to full in-person, so hybrid court appearances will continue. In alignment with the provincial reopening plan, physical distancing is no longer required in the courts. Um, the public is no longer required to wear masks in the courthouse, and that was as of March twenty-first. Staff working in municipal and provincial courtrooms are required to wear masks until April fourth, after which time they will be optional. Uh, Archives, Betty Jo, uh, Beltwood, the manager of Archives, spoke on the Fifty Treasures exhibit at the Colonnus Club on April eighteenth. And you'll recall that the Fifty Treasures exhibit was created to celebrate the Archives' golden anniversary. And it's highlighting fifty treasures from their collections through weekly uh historical articles. And there is a plan for public viewing, and the treasures include items such as a set of council minutes from eighteen fifty-three. Um, and eighteen thirty-six tax tax assessment rule, which is believed to be the oldest document. In the Stratford Perth Record Archives, sort of the oldest municipal record in the Stratford Perth Archives. And this week's treasure is a Perth County Farmer's Diary from the eighteen forties, so I encourage everybody to take a look at that. Information Technology, they've been busy working on a continuous improvement project. Um, they're upgrading the current backup system to a new platform. Uh, they are still working on the IT and GIS strategic plan and have ga- and have engaged in resource planning. To evaluate current and future projects and the operational workloads that those will entail. Legislative Services welcomed Phil O'Donnell as Perth County's Record Management Intern. This was part of a modernization. Grant that we received. Mr. O'Donnell has a BA in Criminology and Sociology and a Social Service Worker Diploma. He has experience in the justice sector and in records management, so we're delighted to be able to apply Mr. O'Donnell's skills to this program. Uh, and and speaking of the team in Legislative Services, Linda Becker, our manager of POA, her last day with the county. Is Friday, April twenty-ninth, so today is actually her last council meeting. Um, many of the great compliments that the county has received on its smooth operations of the provincial court system can be attributed to Linda. Uh, she's the loyal and dedicated employee. She's fiercely protective of her team, and she will be missed, so we wish Linda well on her retirement. Subject to any questions? That is my report.
Thank you very much, Annette. Questions for Annette on her report? Must have been thorough. I don't see any questions. Okay, Perth County have a motion Perth County Council receives the Legal slash Corporate Services March twenty-two Update Report. Move by Councillor Wilhelm, seconded by Councillor McDermott. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? That's carried. Moving on. And the next thing is the debenture for the County Courthouse Elevator Project. And we'll get Cory online here, I'm assuming.
Morning, Cory.
Good morning, nature. So how are you?
Good. We're ready for your report on the debenture.
Perfect. Uh, so um, we have been in contact with Infrastructure Ontario in relation to uh getting a money now. In relation to the courthouse elevator project. Um, so we secured uh one point two eight five million dollars with the Infrastructure Ontario for a ten-year amortization. Of uh at a rate of three point five two percent. Um, you'll notice within the report I do indicate uh where we essentially reside on our annual repayment limit. Um, as municipalities can only um on their own source revenues uh. Uh, have about twenty-five percent in the in annual debet repayments. Um, so out of that twenty-five percent, we're at, we're, we will be at three point nine five percent. Which is essentially sixteen percent of the of the of the twenty-five percent. Um, we we still have about four point four million dollars of room uh to look at the ventures. Um, and as everybody's aware, we'll be looking to do the debenture in relation to the campus renovations. So if there's any questions with the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Cory. Questions for Cory on this report? Not seen any hands up. Okay, I have a motion Perth County Council receives the debenture for Perth County Courthouse Elevator Project Report. Moved by Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by Deputy Warden Eggits. Those in favor? And that is carried. Very. Thanks, Cory. We're gonna move on, and next we have Public Works. We'll get John up here. Nobody wants to ask questions. They want to get it, get out and enjoy the sunshine.
Anticipation.
That just looks so nasty out there. Oh, it is nasty.
Windy.
You can't have a day without wind around here anymore. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Warden Natureson. Uh, thank you for having me today. Uh, the first report is just an update on our major facility projects at the courthouse campus. Uh, the report is brief and fairly self-explanatory, but I will highlight a couple of things. Uh, we anticipate a start date of mid-May for the courthouse elevator project. And the manufacturing of the elevator itself is one of the long lead items for this project. And that's gonna take about twenty to twenty-five weeks to manufacture. And we're currently scheduled for the installation of that elevator in the first week in November. Uh, Mayhew Inc. has been engaged to provide design services for the renovation and connecting link addition at Five Huron Street. And that includes acquiring architectural and consulting engineering services for the project. Mayhew reviewed proposals for these services and have engaged two local firms. Robert Ritz Architect will provide architectural services for the connecting link addition. And any engineering will provide consulting engineering for both the renovation and addition. The project is currently on schedule. Uh, we anticipate actually being back to council on June sixth. To uh for Mayhew to give you an update on the schematic design phase. Uh, we we'll be completing that in June and bringing that to council for review. Uh, and also Mayhew says that the they're confident that the project is still going to be on budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, John. Questions for John? And I see Councillor Wilhelm's got a hand up here.
Yeah, in your, excuse me, in your pictures for the elevator, in the third level, it looks like it's gonna take an area out of that. Waiting room outside the courthouse or the. What uh or the courtroom, what uh area is that really gonna take? Well, that block, the hallway to the turret or. Whereabouts is it gonna be located up there?
Yeah, thank you. Through the warden, uh, the elevator shaft will be coming up uh sort of. Into the hallway there, which leads to that bathroom and judge's chamber at the end of the hall, so that that hall is going to be. Eliminated and reworked on the other side. Uh, we're not gonna lose access to sort of the uh the turret area, if you will, or um. The tower areas, which we we refer to it. Um, it just the hallway is gonna be reworked. And that elevator shaft will sort of open up into the current hallway there uh just beside council chambers.
I answer your question.
Just just one clarification, if I may. So that will block the access to the washroom and the office back there.
Uh, correct. It's gonna be relocated to the opposite side, so the hallway. Uh, will now be located at to at basically the ex- sort of the exterior side of the building. There's currently a washroom. There for the judge's chamber, and that's gonna be relocated over onto the other side, so there still will be a washroom for public. And there's still gonna be a washroom within the judge's chamber, uh, just just relocated uh opposite sides.
And we have to maintain the washer for judges chamber. That's it, definitely. Other questions? Not seeing any hands go up. So I have a motion Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-two. Facility Projects Update Report moved by Councillor Callum, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? That's carried. And we shall move on. Tender results. Is you doing this or is Bill doing this?
Uh, Bill's going to come on and do that one.
Okay. So Benji tricks me. Yes. Morning, Bill.
Morning, Warden Atristan. Morning, Council.
We're ready for your report.
Thank you. So included in the two thousand twenty-two capital budget is the rehabilitation of Perth Road one thirty-nine from. The town of Saint Mary's limits to Wayland Line, which is a distance of approximately uh nine point four kilometers. A component of this capital project is the introduction of a stress-absorbing membrane interlayer, um, Sammy. Which is embedded in between the existing asphalt surface and the new asphalt surface. With the purpose of delaying or mitigating the effects of rap- uh reflective cracking uh from migrating. Up through to the newly placed asphalt surface, uh, effectively prolonging the service life of the road asset. So tenders were issued to solicit bids from contractors for the supply and placement of the stress-absorbing membrane interlayer. There were two plant takers um with one submission, uh, which is summarized within the report. The bid received from Walker Construction Limited meets the specifications of the tender documents. And this contractor has demonstrated the ability to perform the required work. Walker Construction has performed similar work for the county and within the county on behalf of the local municipalities. Uh, mainly as a surface treatment contracts. Uh, however, they have completed Sammy applications for the county. Um. Perth Road one thirty-five um is an example of that, which was uh two thousand eighteen project. Staff has reviewed the unit rate pricing provided and has compared this submission with similar contracts throughout the region. As well as compared to historical projects um of similar scope within the county itself. And we are satisfied that the tender results uh of the bid represent fair pricing and they fall within the project's budget allotment. If there are any questions on this report, John or myself are happy to answer.
Perfect. So questions for Bill on this report? Just gonna do a double check, be sure I got no hands here. Doesn't look like we have any. Thanks, Bill. So I have a motion here. The Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand twenty-two slash oh three one slash oh two. Stress-absorbing membrane interlayer slash Perth Road one thirty-nine report. And Perth County Council Award Tender two oh two two slash oh three one slash oh two to Walker Construction Limited. And the Perth County Council authorized the warden clerk to execute agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth. And Walker Construction Limited. Move by. Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by Councillor Biden. Last chance for questions? Those in favor of that motion? And that's carried. Perfect. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
So now we're moving on to council reports. Does anyone have anything under council reports? Don't see any. Uh, Councillor Mackenzie?
Well, this really isn't a council report, but it's an update uh that uh our Mitchell Hawks recently won the the uh. Series that there were in and have had correspondence from the mayor of Clearwater, which Stainer is in, and that's the new. Uh, team that we're going to be taking on now, and he seems quite interested in making a wager as to who's going to happen, so I just thought I would bring that up in case something happens and I need to get bailed out somewhere.
Just so we're all aware and sure that you're waging your own money.
Yes.
And go for it. You gotta have some fun.
It is.
Yeah. Anyone else have anything to bring up? This isn't necessarily a council report, but I want to congratulate our first. On receiving the funding for the skills development. Be kind of interested to see how that's gonna roll out, because I know certain. People that might be really interested in that. Like, I think that's a great coup for the North Perth. Great coup. Okay, nothing else under council? Okay, bylaws. And we have a couple, and the first one is. Bylaw for the Walker Construction Tender. Uh, signing, and that is bylaw three eight seven zero dash two oh two to be ready first, second, and third time. And finally passed this twenty-first day of April two thousand and twenty-two. Move by Councillor Duncan, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? That's carried. And we have another bylaw, and this is for the debenture of the elevator, yes?
I'm gonna get Sean to put this one on the screen because it's just.
Oh, yeah. So this one here, we had a little bit late sent out, so Sean's gonna put on the screen. I'm sure you probably all read it. How many pages is that?
Fifteen.
That's what I thought. A lot of whereas and therefor's and.
We'll put it on the screen.
We're gonna put it on the screen, because it wasn't on the package for the public.
That's for the bylaw.
The bylaws actually three eight seven one, Sean.
For.
We're doing well, so. Okay, so Sean, if you could just scroll through that slowly.
I can adjust my speed as needed. I'd do more of it to just Sean if you could just do one page, hold it for a couple seconds, yeah, the next page. So this should just give us whatever is not seen is going to be the next sort of portion now.
So we will, this will be on the website after.
Yeah.
So it will be available to be read.
So the public has the opportunity to see the bylaw.
It's a standard bylaw that was forwarded to us by Infrastructure Ontario and I have reviewed it.
Yes, they weren't giving out a rate up until the Wednesday, were they? Like it wouldn't. Try them on up and so it just been a little bit, if you notice, a little higher than originally anticipated.
Couldn't be helped, so. And I'm guessing it's going to more. A lot more maybe next week or next month.
I'm not sure if they'll do it next month, but they may want to see how the half point works. Six point seven, I'm guessing they're going to have another one next month.
There's eight points over last year, which last year.
One part about that, I don't know, or letting people read this, but. They said the food rate was only up eight point nine percent. I struggle to believe that's accurate. I think that's all. It is. I think it's a lot higher than that. I know you get shrinkflation on the packaging, but. I look at the price of things, it's like, that's more than eight percent or nine percent more. And it's going to get worse, too.
Okay, so we're pretty well through that there now. That will be available on the website for anyone who wants to read it thoroughly. And if we can go back to the screen, so I have bylaw number three eight seven one two oh two two to be ready first, second and third time. And finally passed this twenty-first day of April two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by. Counsel Wilhelm, seconded by Counsel McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. And moving on. Notice emotions. I don't think we have any other business. Not seeing any hands. Announcements. Not seeing the hands. Okay, so we do have a closed session. In accordance with section two thirty-nine of the municipal act, a closed session pertaining to three items. A, a matter pertaining to labor relations, public works, a matter pertaining to labor relations planning. And a matter relating pertaining to labor relations C A O. So move by. That we go into closed session at. Nine fifty-six, that would be moved by Counsel McDermott, seconded by. Counsel Mackenzie. Those in favor? That's carried. So we're going to have to take a couple. Okay, so what we have left is a confirmatory bylaw. And that is three eight seven two dash two oh two two being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. On the corporation of the county Perth and its regular meeting held April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Is ready first, second and third time and finally passed April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by. Counsel Mackenzie, Counsel McDermott. Those in favor? Carried. And finally, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting at eleven oh five. Moved by Counsel Wilhelm, seconded by Counsel. Those in favor of that motion? And that was carried. Thank you very much, folks.